...to order, I'll ask that you please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. God, we thank you for this day and the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Help us as a world, help us as a nation, help us as a state, help us as a city. We strive to do that which is good, that which is perfect. Give us a blessing to love one another and honor each other's life and faith. In thy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may have seated. First of all, I want to tell you, I just left a group of Taiwanese sailors that have been here, it's not me, thank God, okay, that have been here for over a year. We had the blessing to be able to restore the ship that they bought from the U.S. here at the shipyard. This is the second vessel that we've been able to do, their entire fleet of people, while they're here, stay in North Charleston, shop in North Charleston, eat in North Charleston, and I discovered drink in North Charleston. But, great group of folks, I had an opportunity to meet with the head admiral of the Taiwanese Navy. They're looking to buy a couple more ships from the U.S. and we're looking to be able to redo those for them. So, I just want you to know, I tried to represent you as abiding well with that group. Okay, first thing we're going to do is honor and recognize our new employees, and I'm going to ask them to come forward as I call their name. From our police department, Michael A. Bishop, Charlie M. Eccles, Colin O. Inogran, hopefully, Jason C. Michael, James R. Stevens, Sean P. Weatherford, Ashley V. Vest, West, excuse me, and John B. From our fire department, Jonathan A. Easterling, Stephanie Fuhrer, Joshua D. Green, Zachary D. Joyce, Lucas Pinto, Angel J. Rivera, Christian G. Rogers, Darius L. Ryan, Daniel Vargas, Danielle S. Simmons, and Alex E. And from our public works department, I'm going to ask Nima M. Magadam, hopefully I got you right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the city of North Charleston. As employees, you have one of the greatest opportunities in the world, and that's to serve your fellow man and woman, an opportunity to be paid to make this world a little bit better. I ask that as you do your job, you remember the role that we play, and that's to be servants of the public. We're here to protect the public and serve the public. And I ask that you keep that in mind in everything that you do each day while you're working for the citizens of North Charleston. I'm going to ask you to turn around and look at your counsel. These are the folks that supply your money, on your budgets, to provide the opportunity for you to serve. They are very caring, not only about their individual districts, but about the city as a whole, and we strive to give you the tools and equipment you need to do your job the very best you can. We're actually working on the budget now, and it's not any fun, but we're working to still provide you with the equipment and the pay that you deserve and need to provide the services to this community that we live in. We want to thank you for being, turn, you can turn around now, we want to thank you for being a part of the city of North Charleston. There's no greater love than to serve your fellow man, and that's what you now have an opportunity to do. Welcome aboard. Thank you. And you don't have to stay. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a proclamation for the Red Cross. I'm going to ask Ms. Louise Welch-Williams, the regional CEO, Mr. Sid Boom, board member, and Ms. Laura Zagsby, from Blood Services, to please come forward. Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Happily. Proclamation, whereas we in the city of North Charleston have a long history of helping our neighbors in need, American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help community members. And whereas these heroes help families find shelter after a home fire, they give blood to help trauma victims and cancer patients, they deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital, they use their life-saving skills to save someone from heart attack, drowning, or choking, they enable children around the world to be vaccinated against measles and rubella. And whereas the American Red Cross depends on local heroes to deliver help and hope during a disaster, we applaud our heroes here in the city of North Charleston who give of themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. And whereas across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small, in fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. It collects nearly forty percent of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions of life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or mitigation. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now therefore be it resolved that I, our Keith Summy, Mayor of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2017 as American Red Cross Month, and encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission.
I'm going to say this at risk. I don't think there's an organization anywhere in this state that does any more for citizens in a time of need than the American Red Cross. They have been there when we've had fire victims, they've been there when we've had flood victims, they've been there for everything that we have, they show up. And they have been such a good partner, to the point that if you'll remember, when the United Way took them off of their list of support, we changed the way that we could donate through our payroll, where American Red Cross has its own listing for employees to go to, because we probably have more fires than anybody else in the Low Country, and they respond to every one of those to meet the needs of our people when their heads are down because they're upset, they are afraid, they're scared, they come in and help them lift that head up. And so I can tell you, I encourage everyone to donate and support to the American Red Cross. To me, it's the greatest attribute that we have for service to this community in the city.
Always a pleasure, sir. Sorry, Shorty, give me another.
Thank you, Mayor Summy, County City Council. There were the 2015 floods, there was Hurricane Matthew last year, and we were good partners with the city of North Charleston and all of them, and we promised unfortunately there'll be another one. But the biggest disaster that we face in South Carolina every day is house fire, and your fighter fires, your chief, are great partners. We have, in the past year, we've assisted over 235 people right here in the city of North Charleston who have lost their home to fire. The greatest thing, two years ago, South Carolina was one of two states in the nation to be an innovative lab for our smoke detector installs. We started it right here in the city of North Charleston. In those two years across the country, 197 lives have been saved because of the best practices started here, your chief's leadership, working with the Red Cross, to put in these smoke detectors. We have saved, we have 20 lives saved right here in our own South Carolina. Most recently, two of those lives were right here in the city of North Charleston on Alabama Drive. So our partnership is making a huge difference, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You also roll up your sleeves four times a year, and you're good leaders in North Charleston. You give that life-saving blood, and you do it with a smile. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, you may continue with the printed agenda.
Item one is a request to approve the minutes of the February 23rd, 2017, City Council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two is the final reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents for the grant of additional right-of-way totaling 0.096 acres to the South Carolina Department of Transportation from three city-owned properties on Mall Drive.
Move for approval.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three is the final reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew an agreement with International Boulevard LLC for parking on city property in the vicinity of the Coliseum, Convention Center, and Performing Arts Center.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jamison?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as 1914 Carlton Street and 3117 Shakora Avenue, Charleston County TMS, 469 1200149, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Multi-Family Residential, and concurrently amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map for the same parcel, changing it from Single Family Traditional to Multi-Family Residential in Council District 10.
If you could advance the slide, please, thank you, to the guests. So this is the proposed rezoning of a property located on the corner of Carlton and Shakora, Carlton Street and Shakora Avenue. It's currently zoned R1, is proposed for rezoning to R2. It's owned by Menonoya CDC and is just over 4,300 square feet, annexed in 1972, and a part of Council District 10. And the next slide is a picture of the property as it was posted for tonight's meeting, and this is the aerial showing the location at the intersection of Shakora and Carlton. And this is the zoning map of the property, showing that it is currently zoned R1, as is the block around it, however, there is R2 interspersed throughout Shakora. And the next slide is the future land use map, showing that it is currently designated for Single Family Traditional, again, as the block is, but there is a Multi-Family Residential future land use interspersed throughout Shakora. So this is the proposed rezoning of a vacant duplex in Shakora, so that it may be renovated and reoccupied. Given the mixed residential character of Shakora and the existing duplex, staff recommends approval, and the planning commission concurred unanimously.
Any questions by council? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue?
Bryant, 2133 Cortland Avenue, Charleston, Carolina 29403, not 2, former member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, Charleston County, see letter December 2010. Matter of fact, this is my identifier here, which is a real ID in South Carolina, it's passed a law in the House, so you can go to Charlotte, North Carolina to get on a plane. This is my library card, which I use. I saw a press conference, and this is to, you can approve the zoning, but I saw a press conference, excuse me for the lady, I'm going to take my hat off, I saw a press conference with the mayor, I made a lot of public comments here at the zoning, and Beth Drake. And Beth Drake did a press conference in terms of, the press conference. And the letter I have with Beth Drake addresses a number of issues, and within the letter it has North Charleston in it, as the EPA. And it was ironic that letters that I did receive, I know this is a public safety issue, and I have letters from DC with Homeland Security, Federal Bureau of Investigations, Department of Justice, and 2010, not favorable, so I foiled this letter in North Charleston, I foiled these two letters, and Beth Drake's letter. And guess what I got, that came back to my company, my first company I found in 2010, 1993. It came back as alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and explosives. I don't own any guns, I don't own the explosives. Also, it came back with Office on Violence Against Women again, I don't have an issue with that. And also some came back with disabilities, my father's disabilities are down, so what we're saying is my last property I owned was in North Charleston. So Beth Drake is under the assumption of something, as a former BZA member. Now, when we looked at the General Assembly recently, it's something called S105. If any citizen makes a complaint, the DHEC, and appeal at the DHEC, if it's a frivolous, it frivolous, it could be deemed to be criminal in nature, died by Senator Rankin, and supported by Sandy Sin, who's over this area, and others. If you go, you say something against Boeing, or Volvo, or Daimler, therefore you can then be investigated by these federal entities. So we want you to get this back to Beth Drake. I'll make a comment on two other public comments, to ensure that Beth gets this information from you, because you know, you've had the press conference with her, and I don't know what the nature of it is, it's all about, and whatever, but I want your lawyer to get this and make contact with Beth from me, or my behalf, it means a lot to me.
Ten seconds, Mr. Bryant.
I've concluded that, my position on that.
Thank you, buddy. Anyone else? Hearing none, without objection, this is referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets on next Thursday at 5:00 P.M.
Ready for the next item?
Yes, ma'am.
Next item, number six, is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance rezoning the property, addressed as 2144 Melbourne Avenue, Charleston County TMS, 470110055, from B2 General Business to M1 Light Industrial, and concurrently amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map for the same parcel, changing it from Institutional to Light Industrial in Council District 7.
Ali.
So this is the proposed rezoning of 2144 Melbourne Avenue from B2 to M1. It is owned by the city and measures just over five and a half acres, annexed in 1972, and a part of Council District 7. And this is a picture of the property as it was posted for tonight's meeting, and an aerial of the property showing its location between Rivers Avenue and Meeting Street Road on the far left of your screen, north, just north of Melbourne Avenue. And this is the zoning map of the property, showing that it and the surrounding properties are all currently zoned B2, and the future land use map, which shows that the map envisions a trend towards light industrial in this area. So this is the proposed rezoning of a five and a half acre vacant property situated between Rivers and CSX rail yard, as I mentioned, along Meeting Street Road. Given that the future land use map calls for this area to become increasingly industrial, staff recommends approval, and the planning commission concurred unanimously.
Any questions by council?
I've got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Is it, where's the property at for just so long?
This is it.
This is it?
This is the property, Bob, that was used for the courthouse? Right. When, after the hurt.
Well, how about the people that bought it, shouldn't they be the ones supplying for the zoning?
We have not closed on the property, I do not.
It's one of the contingencies of sales.
It's a contingency of zoning.
So what are they going to do with it? What do they want to do?
Whatever light industrial allows.
They don't, they didn't tell you anything?
Nothing.
Secret meeting. All right.
Any other questions by council? Okay, this is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks.
Based on Karen L. Haas of Congress, my address is 2133 Cortland Avenue, also SC 29403. I was looking at the map, and I made a public comment to the Federal Highways Administration, the Federal Transportation Administration, August of 2015, Berkeley Charleston County Dorchester Council of Governments. Also, we made a public comment regarding Boeing. This was regarding Boeing in 2013, the Department of Health and Environmental Control, and Army Co-Engineers. And also, we made a public comment in 2009 to the EPA, August 3rd, 2008, online, and also to the EPA as well. So what we're doing here, is what I'm trying to do, what I'm trying to do, is look at regionalism, and look at these industrial uses from the past, and all the permits issued out in the past, and this impacts on the community. And this is a mitigation of some sort of this building, because it might have asbestos or something that may be years ago, who knows? But what I'm looking to do with my work, is to look back at past permits that was allowed to deal with infant mortality rates in South Carolina, and with a lot of these uses like the Port Sodory, the Old Naval Base you talked about, and what the impacts of that was on ordinary citizens, that's what I was working on. And so this use is very serious to me, and I hope that Beth Drake and others take a serious look at that.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Without objection, is referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets at 5:00 P.M. next Thursday.
Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance rezoning the property, addressed as 2201, 2205, and 2209 Kimball Road, Charleston County TMS, 478160087, from R1 Single Family Residential to R1A Low to Medium Density Residential in Council District 6.
Ali.
This is a proposed rezoning of a property on Kimball Road. It is currently zoned R1, and is proposed for rezoning to R1A. The property owner is Ms. Azalee Wilder, also the applicant in this case. The area of the property is just under 40,000 square feet, annexed in 1998, and a part of Council District 6. This is a picture of the property as it was posted for tonight's meeting, and an aerial of the property showing there are two existing houses on the property. And the next map is the zoning map, which shows the subject property is zoned R1, as are two of the adjacent properties, but the third adjacent property is recently zoned R1A, rezoned R1A, excuse me, and the future land use map, which calls for redevelopment priority in this area. So this is the proposed rezoning to R1A of a residential lot just north of Midland Park Road off Kimball Road. Given that the parcel was previously designated R1A eligible in 2000, and the adjacent R1A zone property, staff recommended approval, and the planning commission concurred unanimously.
Any questions by council?
I've got a question, Mayor, how many trailers are they going to put on that property? It's a big piece of property.
Can only have one.
Only one?
When I saw this coming in the mail to me, I called the gentleman, because that was a big concern, and I spoke with the president of Midland Park, and both of us were concerned why they listed three. But I think he told me it was just a formation for them to do it this way, but it's only one manufactured home to go on the property.
That's correct.
It can never be more than one.
That's correct.
But I didn't understand why they listed all three of the addresses.
Oh, that's a big piece of property, 4,000 square feet.
Well, I think there's two other houses already on it.
There are two existing houses, and I think there was a third house at one point, which is why there are three address points, which we listed them all, but you can only, there would only be maximum one mobile home allowed, as the property is currently configured.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
But I just, because I did call and
Charles?
Charles explained everything to me.
He's good at that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, this is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks.
Because this is in someone's district, I did a lot of research, I want to make sure I keep this.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question, a minute?
Yes, sir.
Has he signed up to speak on every one of our zoning requests?
You don't have to sign up to speak.
It's advertised public hearing.
Well, the problem is you coming up every time.
This is just an advertised public hearing.
With the same one.
They get a point of order here? They get a point of order?
Yeah.
They get a point of order?
Point of order, it's on every one of them.
Can I get a point of order?
It's not germane to the
Well, theoretically, you should only be able to speak on the topic of that particular zoning.
I'll talk on the topic of that issue, and then, I'll keep it, I'll keep it there. So, can I get my time back? Have I lost time?
You're not, just speak, you're fine.
Can I get my time back? Okay. I got, I have a comment here, right, to the public, to the Public Safety Chairman, Anthony G. Bryant, 2133 Cortland Avenue, Charleston, Carolina, Charleston County Sheriff's Office, and this is from L.B. King Williams. This is Housing and Urban Development, I was HUD certified, 2007 and '08, the whole southeastern region. And I'm concerned about, this letter here I got, from the Justice Department regarding OVW, pretty-oriented policing, and other issues, and also some banking questions I have. So I wanted to make sure that this is on the record to the Public Safety Chairman, so he can get this information, because it's not germane to the subject at all. This will go to the, and attach it to Beth Drake, to make sure she gets this letter here, and this is public safety regarding that district and in that area. And this was public safety regarding that district and in that area, and in terms of equal tax and due process of law for everybody in the community, that's what that's about. So that's what we're talking about here. It's not germane at all, period. So thank you for your service and time.
Thank you, buddy.
Give it to Beth Drake. Thank you.
Anyone else? Without objection, this is referred to the Public Safety Committee meeting, which meets at 5:00 PM next Thursday.
Next item is number eight. It is the first reading of an ordinance for the annexation of Section 52I, TMS 40816003 in Charleston County, City Council District Five.
We'll have a official from the legal department on the annexation at the second reading. Did the, get a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nine is the first reading of an ordinance for the annexation of Section 52J, TMS 47511008, Charleston County, in City Council District Six.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Ms. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Skipper?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That is all I have on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many more properties are outside, in that particular area, outside the city?
I don't know. I met with the Public Service District, Mr. King, this week. They're preparing their budget, wanted to present it to us. Ma'am? 200 total?
32.
3200 total.
I mean, in this particular area, is it not 3200?
No, 3200 still in the district. Total district.
Oh, wait. Mayor, are we making any effort to try to get those people into the city?
We have constantly, we haven't pushed as hard in the last couple of years as we used to, because most of these areas that have not shown any interest in coming into the city, even though we're still providing most of the services to them, except for law enforcement. But we were talking the other day, actually, in a staff meeting, about getting more active in annexations, again, not only of the Public Service District, but adjoining properties to the city boundaries. Got any questions?
Yeah.
Any other comments by council? We have anyone from the public wishing to speak?
No, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, we do. Jonathan Thrower.
Thrower, council.
Jonathan Thrower, the Stavy Road. I know I hate to be the angry black man sometime, but you know, like Malcolm X said, you know, right now in this time period, if you're not a angry black man, then you must be an ignorant black man. I was listening to MLK's speech, right, and he was talking about how America has given black people a blank check, but it came back insufficient funds when we tried to cash that check. And with that symbolism and that analogy, I feel as though the city of North Charleston has done the same thing. Now, I'm going to point to something, I want to read something out of an article. This is coming from you, Mr. Mayor. He said that anytime the city can operate a $15 million swimming pool for 7.5 million, and the price went up, "I don't care what kind of math you use, that's a pretty good deal," said Mayor Keith Summy. District Two's Three High School, Somerville, which is all white, Ashley Ridge, another white school, and Fort Dorchester, another white school, will have priority access during the high school swim season. It will be owned and operated by the city, which will provide staff and pay operational costs. Does this make money? Said Mayor Keith Summy. No. We're not about making money. We're about buying quality of, quality of life for people who live in our communities. Now, what community is this serving? Now, we have a $7.5 million investment in a school district, right? Now, Charleston County School, you know that we're last in education, and we have these schools in our system that are failing us. Show me the amount of dollars that we're spending for white communities compared to what we're doing for black communities. The funds are disproportionate. And what we're seeing, we got a whole school district, a whole empty school in your district, and we went to the town hall meeting, you know what the people were saying? We need a trade school. We want a trade school. And I keep saying, that's how we're going to fight crime. You educate the people, and then what happens from there, you can have better opportunities. Now, I saw something where Menonoya said that they were going to do business entrepreneurship, but screen printing is not entrepreneurship. Jewelry making, that's not entrepreneurship, that's hobby craft. That's something you do in your spare time, you can watch a YouTube video and do that, but then you got a company that's raping the black community under your watch, and you sitting there like a little Uncle Tom, letting these people come in your district and do whatever they want to do, and you ain't saying nothing.
You're a pony that runs in a county.
I got freedom of speech.
You will not, I don't care what you got. You will not attack one individual, county manager. Your time is up. Shut up.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that, we have to make sure, yes, sir, yes, sir. But what I'm saying is, we have to make sure that our communities are protected.
Then know what you're talking about when you come up here.
You understand? That's the frustration. You, you can feel me? I mean, okay, all right, all right, time is up.
And I will remind the general public, the swimming pool that he's talking about is a public swimming pool, for red, yellow, black, and white. And those schools that are in Dorchester County, if they're all white, I want you to talk about the jersey hanging in my office of a young black male from Fort Dorchester who's playing pro ball today. Anything else to come before this body?
I just want to say that my grandkids went to Ashley Ridge.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to say this in the heat of the moment. I want to recognize my wife, tonight is her birthday, and she's with me at council meeting, so could you just wave ahead? Just wave ahead.
And my birthday's tomorrow, so I think he should take both of us out.